Hello, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Grandville City Council. Would you like to call the meeting for order and ask Marcy to call the role, please?
Councilwoman Bongdill.
President.
Maryka. Martha.
Here.
Steenstrom.
Here.
Truth.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Here.
And Miras.
Here. Well, tonight for the in-location, we have Pastor Todd Kendy from Grace Bible Church. So for those of you who wish, I invite you to stand for the in-location. Follow that with the white board.
Father in heaven, we come this week a special week where we commemorate the events of redemptive history fulfilled in the passion of Christ. But even now, before that, we give thanks for government. We give thanks that these stewards are here to manage these forms of order. We pray your blessing upon our mayor, our council members. We thank you for them. Lord, endow them with wisdom for their duties and give them a spirit of sacrifice for the common good of our city. Give them mercy and justice, uprightness and kindness. We ask your blessing on the proceedings of this evening's business in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's a privilege.
So you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So, action and support. Any comments, questions, objections? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. We also have two sets of minutes. First, for the regular meeting, March 11. Have a chance to look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Is that the amended minutes?
Uh, yes. Thank you.
So, support.
Motion, yes, support. Any discussion, comments, actions? All those in favor of approving the regular minutes from March 11, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
In opposition, please say no. And we also have minutes from our budget work section, which we had a week ago until this March 18. Productive meeting. So a motion to approve those minutes.
So, support.
Motion, support. Any comments, questions? All those in favor of approving, please say yes. Yes. In the opposition, please say no. Great. I have a presentation of bills tonight. Another substantial amount, about $780,000. Ken, anything you'd like to point out before we open up the questions?
Well, the first thing to indicate is that the largest bill on there, 140, almost 142,000 for Davis Construction Clean Water Plant, that's actually not a new invoice. Council approved that prior. The check was cut, the check was sent, it was never received, and so payment was stopped, and a new check has been issued. So it showed up again, but council previously approved that entire amount. And as I recall, that was the final bill for that project. On the invoice list, really, there's about four very large bills that are dominating as far as the amounts go. And so those include our monthly health insurance payment to Mesa, which occurs on various pages and various funds. There's a $85,000 amount of plant removal, which is a progress billing for the irrigation project of the water plant, which is now about 60% to the full contract amount. There's the monthly water bill from City Wyoming, $73,000. And then the generator that council previously authorized the purchase for the PW is on there on page two. That's just about $40,000. So that's by far the majority of the amount. The rest is just scattered as you look through the various funds. The largest portion of the bills tonight falls on the clean water area. It's about 35% of the total. Now, if that is to mayor, would you be happy to answer any questions?
Questions for Ken about any of the bills on tonight's list? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $784,299.58? So, motion, support. Okay, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilwoman Maryka.
Yes.
Martha.
Yes.
Steenstrom.
Yes.
Truth.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Bongdill.
Yes.
And Miras.
Yes. Presentation tonight from the Environmental Sustainability Committee. Annual update. I don't know who's going to give it, but I see a lot of your members are here. So, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. Great. For those of you who are not me, I'm Jason Flanagan. I'm serving as the chair of the Environmental Sustainability Committee. We're here to give you an annual update, as we do every year. I'll try to move quickly, but please stop me if you have any questions. We're going to talk about, we're going to introduce some new members that we have. We'll talk about what we achieved in 2023 and what we have planned for the coming year. There's two new faces since we were last in front of you. So Seth and Martha joined us. I think Martha actually drove all the way from Florida to be here tonight, so we're glad to have her.
Yes, it was quite a haul. But it was worth it.
You've seen the slide before, so these are our focuses and priorities as established by the resolution that created our group. So, you know, we advise on sustainability issues and best practices for the city and city groups. We seek to collaborate with other departments or other organizations in West Michigan. We lead our own sustainability initiatives. We share resources and education materials through avenues like social media and website and city newsletters. And then, of course, we provide an annual report to you once a year. We have a long list of accomplishments for 2023. We'll dive into a couple of them. But I already mentioned that we welcomed Martha and Seth to the team. We continue the work on our Michigan Green Communities Initiative. We were, had a bronze level, recognition level for a number of years, and we've been working towards a silver level status, so we've worked on that in '23. We hosted cardboard and foam recycling events. One that you know about and gave previous support to is enrolling Granville in the National Wildlife Federation's Community Wildlife Habitat Program. So we enrolled Granville in that this year. We hosted invasive plant removal events. Mentioned before that we did a lot of education engagement through social media, the city page, and regular contributions to city newsletters. One new thing this year, groups, you know, the further we get away from the pandemic, groups are doing more and more events like conferences, webinars, other learning avenues. So we've been able to contribute and participate in a lot of those this year as well. Just to rehash on what is Michigan Green Communities. What is largely led by the Michigan Municipal League is now receiving support from other organizations like Eagle, DNR, MDOT. But really, what the organization does is creates a challenge for local government that outlines actionable steps towards creating a more environmentally sustainable, economically vibrant, and healthier communities. We began our journey in late 2020, early 2021. We set a goal to achieve bronze in 2022, which we met. We established a goal to achieve silver in 2024, and I'm happy to announce that we did achieve silver this year. The organization will officially announce that in May. The submission period is open until May 1st. We're trying to pinpoint when the official announcement will be. Last year was about May 10th, but so we'll have some new materials and we can update the sign. That was a great accomplishment. This is a little bit of extra detail on what goes into that and where we succeeded. Here you can see the building that we've done to the program over the last three years. You know, we're really excelling in the inspire and materials categories to things like community outreach and the recycling events. But as you can see, there's plenty of opportunity for us to grow and do more. We have an established goal for the group to achieve gold status by 2027. In order to do that, we've got to double the work that we've done so far. You know, we plan to focus our efforts on health, energy, and climate, which is where we have the most opportunity today. Another interesting fact about all the work that we've done, of course, this program highlights the great work the city has already done, but we wanted to drive new work. And today, only about a third of the points that we've captured is driven from new work and participation in the program. Two-thirds being driven by work the city has already done. So we're looking forward to doing more because of the program and driving more work. I mentioned the cardboard and foam recycling events. Harbor Foam continues to be our partner. They host the event, they take the materials. We've got a new cadence of doing two a year, one around Earth Day and one around the holidays when people are doing a lot of shopping and hanging out to a lot of cardboard and foam. Growing attendance every year. This year doubled last year, and we hope that continues going forward. I mentioned the Community Wildlife Habitat Program. This is our complement to the Michigan Green Communities. Michigan Green Communities is, you know, very focused on things like infrastructure, whereas Community Wildlife Habitat focuses on the natural world. The program, we accomplished certification through two different avenues, needing to do both of them. One is outreach projects that this group, our group or the city can complete. And the other, which fosters community involvement, is getting individual habitats, people's homes, schools, parks certified. You know, National Wildlife Federation Community Habitat Program is a mouthful. We have rebranded this for our team. We're calling it Growing a Green at Granville. In order to not lose focus on our work in Michigan Green Communities and really get this off the ground, we have kind of created split focus and subcommittees. So a portion of the team focuses on Michigan Green Communities and a portion of the team focuses on this effort. There was a, late last year, was a very successful kickoff event to introduce this to some other, you know, local community organizations. Over 10 attended. It was a great way to end the year and set up for work this year. Just some nice pictures of our invasive species projects. Last year was a garlic mustard pole, and we hope to make this a regular occurrence and do many more in the future. 2024 plans. I mentioned we continue to look to hold recycling events. Mark your calendars for Earth Week is April 27th, Saturday, 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Cardboard and foam. We typically show these out through Facebook and flyers, so look for more. We're working to set a December date. One thing we did last year for the Earth Day event was we asked for funding and you had approved funding for native seed packets that we gave to people that were interested at the event. We have the same ask this year. We'd like to continue that. We're talking a little bit, we do have more events planned, more opportunities to hand these out across the community. So we're asking for $150 to buy those materials again, to pass out at events this year. And we do plan to try to foster more community engagement by asking people to share the hashtag and share photos when the plants have grown. Our plans for Michigan Green Communities for 2024 really are maintaining our silver status and making progress towards our gold goal, but that is a future-year goal, so striving for that for 2027. You know, we do feel proud, proud of this work. We set this long-term plan back in 2021, and it's exciting to see that we're making progress and meeting our timeline. Lots of work to do on Growing a Green at Granville. We have a couple of exciting events to share. We will be holding a Gardening for Wildlife Spring Speaker Series. There'll be four events between April 29th and May 22nd, held at the library. Some of the topics include building your own nature sanctuary, invasive plants, gardening for pollinators, healthy gardens, healthy waters. So please join us. Those will be at 7:00 p.m. at the library, and the dates are created as events on Facebook. That'll be culminating in a June 1 native plant sale and expo held at the farmer's market pavilion. We'll have local vendors and partners join us there. And these programs really, these events really serve as a kickoff to this overall program that we anticipate taking, being like a three-year effort to achieve certification. Finally, just to wrap up, a couple other things we look to continue into 2024, of course, using social media and the website to advise residents in the community on sustainability issues and resources. We continue to look to build partnerships and relationships with other organizations across the city and beyond. And we want to continue to serve as a resource for this team, staff, other departments on sustainability issues and initiatives. We could use your help. If you're near other committee meetings, if a topic comes up, you think you could use our perspective on, feel free to, we'd be happy to take a look and share knowledge or point you in the right direction. That's all I have for slides. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Your group ought to be very proud. You've accomplished a lot, and especially congratulations on achieving silver status. That's a big deal. Now, is gold exponentially harder than?
Yeah, so gold is twice as hard as silver was.
Yeah, yeah. Huge accomplishment, and thank you again for hosting cardboard. I see you got 2,000 pounds. I think I can.
Maybe like 1,200 of those or something.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
I like the graphic, too, the one that says Growing a Green at Granville.
Yeah, Mitch did a nice job creating a logo for the mission.
Very nice graphic. Yeah. That was pretty cool.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council? Please just come up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about this evening. Mitch, welcome.
I had to go first, so I was waiting. Good evening. Mitch Leachman, 3963 Basswood Drive. I am a member of the C. It's entirely possible my comments tonight, all of the committee members would agree with me, but it's not a subject we've discussed, and I'm not representing them. This is my personal comments. I see on the agenda tonight, the consent agenda, is Canada geese. I had not planned to be talking to you about Canada geese tonight, but I was looking at the attended pack, and I saw that, and I was like, oh, okay. Well, this is a subject that I have opinions about. So I just want to bend y'all's ears for a couple minutes and hopefully reinforce things you already know. At the same time, if I share some things that are new, that's good, too. And I'm a tree hugger, I'm a naturalist, I mean, I love birds, and I have nothing against Canada geese. And at the same time, I fully appreciate how big of a nuisance they can be. And they're far from endangered. Their population was at risk many, many years ago. But that is to simply say that I have no issues with this intended action, and Granville Lake's not far from where I live. I fully understand the frustrations and concerns. But what I wanted to share with all of you, or again, remind you, is that it's pushing a rock up a hill, the actions that are being requested, because those actions perhaps have been done in the past in the same community. They're almost certainly going to be need to be done again in the future. But I don't want to get distracted with that particular residential community. I'd like to make the broader point, most especially about public spaces like parks. We have, and the Parks Committee, Parks and Rec Board and Public Works has acknowledged in the current five-year plan that there's a real goose poop problem at Heritage Park. I learned of that not by reading the plan, but by walking there one day and a few months ago. I went back and walked a second time, but I will probably never walk through the park again so long as it's the way it is. If I lived nearby, I would consider it a health problem, quite frankly. So, so all of this is to say that what I would encourage the city, city staff, elected leaders, perhaps as the Parks and Rec Board looks at their next five-year plan, consider ways of managing public spaces in a way that not only is good for habitat, but also may discourage geese. And the single best way to do that, which is very well documented, is to not have mowed grass all the way up to water's edge, most especially in still water lakes and ponds. And I emphasize that last point because we have Buck Creek, of course, and there are grassy verges that run up against the edge of Buck Creek. We don't have a goose problem because geese are not terribly interested in the fast water. And my last point, I would say, by way of example, is if you've been to Millennium Park recently, or if not, and you go there soon, think about this subject when you're walking around the big lake and realize that they don't really have a goose problem, and they got lots of water, lots of still water, but they have very little in the way of grassy verges running right up against the lake. So that's just what I wanted to share tonight. Again, I'm fully comfortable with what's being planned. I would just like to encourage, again, the thought process of perhaps not only addressing geese in a longer-term manner, but then also providing habitat for other cool critters at the same time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Can I follow that up? Absolutely. Public comment? Sure, come on out.
I'm the one here for the resolution on the goose problem.
Right, good. Come on out. Because I was going to draw on you later, so.
Chris Black, 3440 Navajo Drive, Whispering Spring Lake condo association for the neighborhood. We have been in this program now for 20 years of ratifying the goose problem that we have on our lake. We have, right now, a flock of about 15, which doesn't seem like a lot, but 15 turns into 30 real quickly, as you all know. We're not the only problem with it, like you have said Heritage Park is. Also, over by Carrabas in that area, by Meyer in that area, there's a real problem. There's a pathway that goes from Potomac to Carrabas there, and you can't even walk on it during the summertime. There's so much goose poop, if you want to call it. My grandkids call it the goose poop trail, so, I mean, it's, there's something needs to be done with that also. But this, the last four years, we have had a problem with removal, the removal program. Bird flu has affected the state of Michigan, and they have stopped the, you know, gathering of the goslings and the parents and taking them to the east side of the state, to refugees areas. It takes about two to three years to train those geese to stay where they're at and not come back to their nesting, their original nesting areas. So what is happening now is we have applied for permit and gotten permission the last few years to destroy the eggs and the nests. And that's what this resolution 3341 is all about, is for goose roundup, removal, and nest destruction and egg destruction. So I'll take your comments if you like right now.
Questions for Chris about the plan?
Okay, yeah.
That's what we're working on.
Yeah, well, it's been a long process, but there is damage that's being done to the, to our yards and stuff from the geese. I had the 15, the flock of 15 in my yard the other day, and they were rutting it up and pretty good. So, I mean, it's one of the things that we fight with every year, so. So I appreciate you doing that. If you have any questions, you can get ahold of us.
We appreciate whatever you're on.
Thank you.
Still under public comment? Anybody else have any comment they'd like to make? Martha, welcome.
Thank you. Martha Vermulien, 263 Indian Spring. And I'm happy to be back in Granville after my travels, which were wonderful. It's interesting, the subject came up because I just had a visitor from American Rivers walking Granville with me today. I was so proud to show off our community and our rain garden and our riparian borders and those kind of things. And we got on the subject of geese, and she said exactly the same thing that Mitch said and that I've read, is that when you don't allow the grass to get close to the water and you have just a little bit of a border, it doesn't have to be real tall, the geese magically stay off. And she totally agreed with me on this. And then we were walking along Buck Creek Trail and admiring the beauty of our community. And we were talking, too, about areas along the creek where we still have grass running right up to the edge of the creek and the erosion that's beginning. If you take a walk, you'll see there's a lot of erosion. So again, we could, I don't know if we could totally alleviate it, but we certainly could help reduce some of that for the geese as well as the erosion of our watershed. So, anyway, I just had to weigh in on that one. The big reason I'm here is I want to invite you, I'm sure Kyla has done this before, on April 26th. Do I have it right, Kyla? At, well, it's now, it used to be our old middle school, and now it's Oak, what is it called?
Oakstown.
Thank you. Oakstown Intermediate School. We are having a big celebration, and we hope that each of you will be able to join us as well as those of you who are here. We're going to start out with finally dedicating that rain garden, which, by the way, she said even though it's still all brown, she says, "This is beautiful." But she got it because she understands that stormwater that used to be going into the creek is no longer half happening, and it's there. It is beautiful, even in its brown state. And then that will be followed very quickly by a huge Arbor Day celebration. I'm so proud that Granville is and continues to be a tree city USA. So kudos to all of you, to Granville, and thank you for your time. Any questions? All right.
Thank you. Thanks, Martha. Appreciate the comments. Anybody else like to address the council? Last call, public comment. Okay. Well, let's go on to the consent agenda. Number of items there.
Maybe Charlie might have a comment on. Okay. Mowing the edges of the water, things like that, public spaces.
We can try mowing it, you know, stop mowing back. I'll do some more research on it myself, what are we going to do? But, you know, they may stop if we're going in the water, but it's not going to stop them pooping on the lawn.
What?
Because they're still going to be there eating the grass. So, you know, we could try something, but that's for habitat, that's what they're going to say. I don't know.
I think we are not mowing heritage as close as we used to to the.
No, we stopped. We trimmed down all the bushes and stuff so you can see, but.
Yeah. There's still an edge there that's not being maintained.
I believe so.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have a number of reports. We have the February reports. Yeah.
I think we're, we just got the ordinances.
Ah, yes, ordinances of resolutions. This is the animal control ordinance. Ken, did you want to talk about that, or Dave, did you want to?
Oh, we got some. Dave can chime in if he wishes to. It's fairly simple. This was an ordinance that was requested by the Kent County Sheriff's Department. There's a county animal control ordinance. Granville has animal control ordinance, and so that creates a little bit of fuzziness with regard to jurisdiction. And there are just some sections that are overlapping that need to be eliminated. So it's a very simple ordinance. It doesn't even take up a full page. Essentially, it revises, actually repeals and restates section 5.1 of the animal control ordinances, where we will specifically recognize that Kent County has adopted an animal control ordinance and that it is applicable in cities in Granville. And at any place that there is any inconsistencies between the two ordinances, the county ordinance is the one that's going to have the precedence over the others. So there's a number of sections that are being just simply repealed as unnecessary. They're listed there, 5-2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 5-10, 5-36, and 5-38. The ones that aren't being repealed are the kinds of things that you would expect to have remaining in our ordinance. They deal with dangerous animals and dangerous dogs in particular. They deal with annoyances that come from dog ownership and those kinds of things that we still wish, we still like to have nuisance ordinance and that do not conflict with the county ordinance. So I think this was the one that there was a typo in, is that?
Yeah, I told Marcy that was under section 4, 10 days active. It's a.
Yeah, I told Marcy that was under Section 4, 10 days after his adoption should be his.
Okay. And because here's the adopting it tonight, we'll make that correction between now and then, as council meeting, I'm sorry, your introduction tonight, we'll make the correction and then we'll be back to adopt in a couple of weeks here or so. This did get reviewed by the city attorney, it did get reviewed by Kent County Sheriff's representatives, everybody's on board with it. We think we covered everything that used to be covered and eliminated any of the confusion that might result from two ordinances there. So, it is requested for council introduction tonight and table.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions?
I was just looking at this here and see the city manager, she'll appoint an animal control officer. Who's the animal control officer?
It'll actually be the Kent County Sheriff's.
Oh, okay. So, that's our going to be.
Yes. Right, Paul?
Right. Does it go along with the city forestry rule?
Right. Yet another, a few more. Is there a motion to introduce ordinance number 317 regarding the animal control?
So moved.
Motion for?
Support.
Support. Any comments? Motion to introduce? Marcy, would you call the law, please?
Councilmember Martha?
Yes.
Steenstrom?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Yonnerlos?
Yes.
Maryka?
Yes.
And Merrimah.
Yes. Is there a motion to table ordinance 317 for later adoption?
Support.
Support. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of table, please say yes. In the opposition, please say no. Great. Now, we're down to the consent agenda. Number of things, a nice annual report from the fire department, two monthly reports, one from Jason Rotman, the director of the IT information, IT in Granville, and the investment report also from February. We also have the minutes from the environmental sustainability committee. We heard about the great work they're doing, the planning commission for March 6th, and the downtown development authority, our last meeting on March 14th. We also talked about Resolution proposed number 3341 regarding candidate goose roundup removal program. And there's a request to set the second budget work session for Monday, April 15th, at 6:00 PM at the Clean Water Plant. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support. Thank you. Motion and support. Any comments or questions or anything? Any one of these items anybody would like to talk about?
I would just specify the resolution regarding geese. This is another in a series, and in the past action, council made that effective for a period of five years. And so, it's probably appropriate if you wish to entertain that again as part of the consent agenda that we specify the term on that, and we would propose that that would be another five-year period.
Okay, it is in the resolution.
Is it there?
Yeah.
It's 2029, but thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and support on the consent agenda. Any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor, please start adopting. Please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Ken, city manager's report, first item, appointment of city attorney.
Yeah, city council received a letter last week from our longtime city attorney, Ray Cracker. He indicated that he first started as city attorney in 1977, so that means that he was in his 47th year, been representing the city of Granville on all legal matters, but that he's announcing his retirement officially at this point. So, you have a letter that indicates he will be retiring effective as of the end of this March 31st. And so, our city council or our city charter, I put some information in there for council that references the city attorney and how that works, as opposed to most of the positions in the city that were appointed by the city manager and confirmed by council. This is actually a position that is the city council. So, you have the ability to designate who you wish to be the city attorney, and in fact, because there's a retirement pending, I think it's appropriate that we name a city attorney officially going forward so that there is a term record in April 1. Dave Colton's here tonight, he's been here before, and he's worked on city issues for a number of years. His resume is included in the packet, and we would like to put Dave's name forth for council consideration as city attorney effective April 1. I mentioned that council would like to have a proclamation in his honor, and he was aware of that and knew he wouldn't be able to be here for a couple of meetings. So, we're gonna hold off on that till probably later in April, but we're gonna make sure that we get a chance to put on record our gratitude for his years of service to the city of Granville. So, Dave, anything you wish to add?
Sure, sure. I guess I'll just say it would certainly be a privilege to serve as your, as your city attorney, but really, I view your city attorney as Varnum. What, what, the bench strength and the depth of experience that my partners have in all the various fields and areas of law that the city relies on, including labor employment, which we've talked about recently, and municipal finance, really, really, I think, you know, I'm your principal point of contact perhaps, but really, Varnum is your city attorney the way I look at it. So, we'd certainly be honored to be able to continue on as your city attorney, and I'd be more than happy to serve in the past as city attorney for the time being. And I can promise you that I will be responsive to your requests, and if I don't know the answer, I'm confident we have somebody that will. Happy to answer your questions.
Questions for David? So, is the motion to appoint David in particular, or David on?
Why don't we make it a motion to appoint Dave Colton and Varnum as city attorneys? Is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Support. Support. Other comments, questions? Thank you for agreeing, this is a continued firm, fine firm, and had a great relationship with the city's management. Okay, Marcy, you've got a motion and support. Will you call the law, please?
Councilmember Steenstrom?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Yonnerlos?
Yes.
Maryka?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
And Merrimah.
Yes. Ken, anything else?
Just a couple of highlights of information that you already received, that Teresa's been working again on activating the Granville Social District, and so that's gonna kick off on April 1, in the same areas council's been familiar with it for the past couple of years. And we're excited to be able to offer our residents and guests to the city, and especially in relation to some of our very popular downtown events. But this is a full seven-day opportunity, so there's a designated map in your packet that lays out those boundaries, but that will be kicking in once again. And then today was the first day, if you didn't run into it by accident, Ivan Rest Avenue closed down at Prairie Street and then north up to M 11 for a big water main and then repaid project. And through traffic is not gonna be possible while they're digging holes in the street, so there are gonna be detours. And I think for a couple of days, it takes time for traffic to settle out and find alternate routes, but hopefully that'll happen quickly. We've got a strong contractor on this one, so the schedule keeps it, at least the tentative schedule, these things are always subject to weather issues and other minor disasters along the way, but we're hopeful that this will be wrapped up by the 14th of July. So, just wanted to point those out for council's information, and I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thanks. Randy, let's start with you for council member comments tonight.
Thank you.
Josh?
I'm sure we'll have a chance to share some words with Randy or about Randy at future date. Welcome, Dave. Thanks for being willing to step in and return your role.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the ESC and the preliminary notification about the Silver status, too. It's a great, nice presentation. That's it.
Listen.
Yeah, I would just agree with what Josh said about the ESC, and thank you all for your continued work on behalf of the residents, and it truly is incredible to see how much progress is made in such a short amount of time, so we're very grateful for that work. And then I was just gonna say on the Ivan Rest project, I'm a creature of habit, and that's how I go to work every day and I come home. So, for the next few months, I'm just gonna keep saying the repaying will look nice. Water mains are important, but I'm talking myself down, so I'm looking forward to that project. Thank you.
Three words. Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, great fire department annual report, Chief May, thank you so much. Jason, thanks for speaking on behalf of me. Thanks all of you for being here and for the great work you're doing. And Ken, thanks for representing the city of Granville on TV8 and looking really good.
Yeah, I appreciate David stepping up and appreciate his service in future for Granville and his past service as well, but are we gonna be able to honor Randy in some way and beyond even a resolution? I mean, he's really, he's with us for so long and you know, affectionately, too.
Luis and I are planning on an event and on the word of a cabbie, and when Randy will feel.
That would be good.
That that would, he's able to do that.
Right.
So, we're looking at something in May, probably, so.
Yeah, okay.
A couple of days.
I'll tell you that is in the words. The other thing, this is quite, I wanna thank the city manager for putting the charter language in front of us. We should all probably review this, by the way, and I thought we had to open this for some reason, but it's all the male pronouns describing the city manager. It's all over here, okay? I mean, just the first, there's five in the first paragraph from city manager, he, his, you know, he shall, he, you know. Two questions. I mean, if we were to hire a woman city manager, okay, could some weirdo come up and say, hey, you're violating the charter because it's not his? But the more important question is, how do we still go about changing that stuff? I know, I know it's not easy, but, you know, it's overdue.
It's a great question.
Yeah.
Because it's actually, because charter's older than I am, and I'm a medicareant, it's just a little bit older than me. We talked about it is to revise the charter. It's.
I know.
I think it's a whole, long process, but I, I think it should be done. There's a lot of provisions in here that probably, like, I think I can, the mayor is authorized to call upon this citizen and says, you know, some very archaic language in there in case of a catastrophe, but just, yeah.
We could narrowly do it ourselves, could we not? And or in some way, I think we'd have to have a vote, we would not, but then we wouldn't have to have a total rewrite. We wouldn't have to appoint a, would we appoint a committee to rewrite the whole thing just to get those out of there? We would. That's dangerous. Even so.
Yeah, someday it's gonna happen.
We should do it. It's already, we can find other things in here that are outdated anyway.
Sounds like you're volunteering.
I might. Does the city attorney have any thoughts on this?
I can certainly get you some recommendations on what the options are, what the timeline is, what the cost would likely be, all those sorts of things, that you guys could think about whether it makes sense to do now or not.
This talks about the sheriff and the justice of the peace and the.
And stuff we have anymore, right?
Yeah, that's been the conversation before, is that there really is a prescribed method for amending the charter, and to do anything, regardless of, you know, it's just as simple as we'd like to look at that piece of it.
Yeah.
You still have to elect a charter commission.
Okay.
You still have to, and once that charter commission is enabled, anything could potentially change. So, I think we probably read it differently than we did 50 years ago, and in our heads, we probably put the slash she in, just because we're much more used to it now, but there is some very, very old language in a, in a city that was created in 1930s, so. But that's my understanding, is you would, you would, you are able to do that, but you still have to go by the processes prescribed.
That's what I figured. I was hoping there was a way to do it narrowly, just for like, you know, certain provisions of like, you know, like for instance, the qualification to be city manager or whatever, you know, but apparently not. Even so, I think it's worth considering, you know, I think so. I just encourage all of us to just take a look and flip through the charter and see if the old outdated sections are there and see if you think we should appoint a commission. Could be us, right?
I don't think so.
Oh, no.
I'm trying to work with you all.
We're not getting the answers we wanted, are we?
Okay, thank you.
Sheriff.
Yeah, I guess to pay you back on that, I mean, could we actually all have a copy of that? Is that something we can, we furnished, is that a thing?
Yes, and I'm surprised because I thought upon election, we were making those materials available. And so, if you don't have one, we've got them, and it, it's probably interesting, it's what, 40 or 50 pages, I guess, and I've been doing this a piecemeal when it's applicable, but it is interesting to go back and see things that we've always done certain ways and maybe didn't think about why we did it, and it's because the charter specifies.
I'm sure I have one, but I want my version like this, though. Yeah, that version. I think I still mine on your office 10 years ago. I think that's all I have.
Marcy's got a stash, stash of them. I know right where they are.
What's the community's backup?
I got one, but yeah.
It's online, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Chief, thank you for the annual fire report. Always interesting to read and see where our services are being lent in the community. And obviously, our National Statehood Committee will be a part of that group. I know Jason said that we're proud of our accomplishments, and I guess I'm proud as a liaison to it that we're just about the only subcommittee that completes an annual report to the council. And I say this every single year, that I would encourage everybody else who's liaisons of their own committees to do the same thing. Seems like we were all engaged and interested in it, and I think we would all be just as engaged and interested in the other subcommittees that were part of it.
Saturday night was the annual expedition. Tickets sold out in 30 minutes, and it was a lot of fun, great weather, so that was a fun event in downtown Granville. Our state representative, Pierre Blandil, and her husband came and participated. I don't know how they did. I didn't see them at the end. I took off early, but anyway, she was there. Also had an event last week with Meals on Wheels celebrating one of their anniversaries, and a great organization. It's one of the best things I think we've got in Granville, just helping people live independently, just, we need just a little bit of extra help. Also, got a couple good emails in the last week. One was Granville's been re-designated as a tree city, USA. And also, today had an email, we received the growth award, and a big part of getting the growth award was because city council has supported Kyla and her group in the tree sale, and as you know, the city pays for half of the tree, up to a certain amount of money. So, got a growth award for that. Also, I went to an interesting meeting today that I was invited to, and that's a project that's called the Grand River Greenway Trail, which goes all the way from, eventually, the hope is to go from Lowell all the way to Lake Michigan. And the goal, the mission is to create a world-class river for all. And so, this is a working group talking about how, how does this all get maintained forever in a, in a way that people want to go there? And, you know, we've got a lot of trail, and we'll be part of that system. You know, Kent Trail goes north, south, east, west, over to the Clean Water Plant, and then hopefully into Auto County. So, kind of an interesting group would be the Kent County Parks Department, so.
Question about that?
Yeah.
Is the, a new pedestrian bridge over the Grand River part of that proposal?
I, I don't know. I don't know. Have you heard that one?
I've heard at some point that it was, and specifically through 28th Street, you know, where it's really needed for us.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I know that, I think the county got a lot of our money that they're able to spend on this. That was, yeah, I'm just, I'm just dipping my toe in this group, but, yeah.
Push for that.
Yeah. Okay, with that, is there a motion to adjourn? So, whatever it wants, is that, we can stay there.
Motion and support. All those in favor, please say yes. In the opposition, please say no. Great, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, guests, for being here tonight.